Greckin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Janer?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
We stand for a moment of silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please. The Pledge of Allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. No proclamations, the first thing up is an interview for the Civil Service Commission, Dr. Cindy Hansen. Come on up and tell us why you want to continue with your service. Thank you for your good attendance record.
Thank you. It has been an honor to serve on the Civil Service Commission. I finished out one term and then completed a whole term, so I'm up for reappointment. I've enjoyed working on the Civil Service Commission, my background in human resources, as well as my experience on the Commission, I think, is an asset right now. We've had a considerable amount of turnover on the Commission in recent, in about the last year, so I think having some stability would be really helpful.
Sometimes, I'll say, I go to their meetings, it's a challenge to get five people there.
It is.
So I really appreciate Cindy reaplying, she's been the chair now for...
Two years, I think.
Two years. Does a great job.
That's awesome.
Good. Thank you for being on the boards and commissions, and it's another thing to be able to attend
and really kind of get in there and roll your sleeves up, so, awesome, thank you.
I would just echo, I think you do a great job. I would just, one, one thing further that I would say, if you know of anyone else, or hear of anyone else, I mean, Dan does a great job, I know, in the community, talking about it, sometimes I forget, but I think we can all be champions to try to bring more people to serve in this capacity, so if you know of anyone, please encourage them.
Absolutely, I was noticing all the Commission openings up there, making mental note of people I can ask and encourage.
And we can get you a list, or, I know Ann does a good job putting it on social and stuff sometimes, too, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Effective fiscal and public policy committee, Mr. Ricky Mock. Come on up, Mr. Mock. Tell us what great qualifications you have.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council Rick Mock, 4134 Natali Way, Sioux City, Iowa. After forty-four years of serving in municipal government, I retired, and now I've decided that I have a little bit of time on my hands, and I think I know something about the financing of municipal government, both from an operating and a capital budget, and I'd like to put those assets to good use by helping the community.
What date do they meet?
Well, they are...
Haven't met.
Right now, it says the second Wednesday of every month at four, but then it says possibly moving to quarterly.
I just don't want to mess with your golf game on Thursday.
I know, that'd be difficult.
Oh, we'll definitely not do that.
I've seen you play, I want to make sure you're still available. Thanks, Recky, for applying.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, and good to see you. Thanks, Recky, appreciate it, buddy. Okay, Library Board of Trustees, Jessica Board. Jessica, tell us a little bit about what, why you want to serve.
I might be too short for this. I'm going to stand over here.
You can pull the microphone down, Jessica, and that will...
Down or over, wherever you need to...
Yeah, whatever you need to do, perfect.
Well, I've lived in Sioux City for about six years now, I'm a practicing attorney at the Hyman Law Firm, I was just named partner in January, and I'm interested in serving on the board at the library, just because I really enjoy the library, and I do have a finance background, and I thought that would be helpful, combined with the legal experience, to help out with the trustees.
Questions? Thank you for making the application, I'm really pleased that you did, and I think you would be a good member of that board.
Thank you, appreciate that.
For sure, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Items three through twelve today constitute the consent agenda, consider it to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes asked for by a council member. And if you want to speak on an item as I read it, please come up, as I get to that number, state your name and address, so it can be used for the record. If you want to speak on an item not under the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Three is a reading of the City Council minutes of April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, I will abstain. Four is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment Actions. Five is a resolution approving change order number one, authorizing payment to KP Construction for the Thirty-Eighth Street Place and Pier Street Storm Repair Project. Six is a resolution proposing to sell property at Thirty-Six Thirty-Seven Rebecca Street, the petitioner is Scott Lee. Seven are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution authorizing application with the FTA for transportation assistance. B is a resolution approving an application for consolidated transit assistance funding from the IDOT.
Mayor, I have a question on that for Mike Collette. Mike, I just want to make sure I'm understanding your write-up on this, you have four items listed for FY two thousand twenty-one, so for example, consolidated transit system operating assistance, you have three hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred fifty-one dollars. Public transit infrastructure grant program for thirty-one thousand, two hundred. Section fifty-three thirty-nine, CMAC, fifty-three ten discretionary funding, is that correct, twelve million?
It, it could be.
Six hundred nineteen, three ninety-four, and then section fifty-three ten special needs program for elderly and disabled, ninety-five thousand, nine eighteen. Are those numbers fixed, or is that what you're making application for?
Both. Mike Collette, Assistant City Manager, so some of these are formula fund-based, and others are competitive. So, for example, the first one under STA funds, those are formula-based money coming through motor vehicle tax from the state. The next one is a competitive program, and that one really depends each year on what the state funds, from RIF money. So it has been a million and a half each year, this year it looks like it's going to be five hundred thousand in total, so we compete with other transit systems for those projects.
Across the state?
Across the state.
So, well, let me, I, I can't let that go, I just, I'm well-rested, so, it normally is a million how much?
Million and a half.
But now it's five hundred thousand when the state is running with a great surplus, and full of COVID money, we cut public transportation. That tells us a lot about our state government. Now, go ahead, I want to throw that out, as long as I was on...
Did they give any reasoning for that, Mike?
I don't know if it'll end there or not, at the five hundred thousand, but, you know, each year...
What could the possible thought process be, do we know?
I do not know that.
I mean, that's a big hit.
Right. I think because we got CARES Act money through the federal government...
They got it, too.
I understand.
They got it, too.
Because then you're not really getting CARES Act money if they're taking it away from somewhere else.
I'm a proponent for more money as well.
I know you are, I know you are, just wondering, just picking your brain.
Yep. And the, the fifty-three thirty-nine money is really the bus money that comes through, but in addition, the large ask here would be for a maintenance facility, and that's competitive-based.
Okay.
And the last one is for elderly needs, and that's service or project beyond what we're required to do, so we have projects in there that, and those are formula money as well.
How much was that last one?
Ninety-five thousand for this year, yep.
What's your timeframe, then, for this process, to someone we will know, just roughly?
Each of these has a different kind of timeframe on it.
Is it like within the next sixty to ninety, hundred and twenty days?
Well, this will actually let us put the applications in for this, this act today, and then we'd come back with approvals.
Nobody's asking how long before you know if you've successful.
And again, it depends on which one, like, the, the second one is due May first, usually by June, July, they let us know.
Okay.
At the state level.
Well, this is just asking to submit the request.
Yes.
Then you'll ask us if you can accept a budget.
We'll come back for approval, right, exactly. Hopefully with a larger number.
Yes.
Well, this is, I mean, this is a big deal, from the standpoint that, you know, these funds are going to be extremely helpful to us, I mean, I mean, I hope our chances are real good for succeeding.
And each year, we go through a public hearing process, too, so last week, the board had a public hearing, to lay out more detail of what the asks are behind these numbers, as well.
Right, okay.
Yep.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
C is a resolution accepting an amendment to the sub-grant agreement with the Iowa Finance Authority, increasing the original award for emergency solutions grant funds.
Mayor, I have a quick question on that for... Not for Jill.
Not for Jill, for Amy Kern's Neighborhood Services Project Coordinator.
Thanks, Amy, for being here. I just want to make sure I understand this, so this increase is going toward the Housing Navigator that we have?
Students, yes.
Within the, and, and that's been very successful, hasn't it?
It has been very successful. We have housed in approximately the past year fifty homeless individuals, a lot of those individuals had never reached out for services before, we're reaching out for the first time, so they're very difficult to, to find landlords who will take them, due to their barriers, so we have been extremely successful with that program. We have some people who are transitioning off the program, some have found other housing on their own, some are transitioning into section eight, and then we will be reaching out to get more participants for our program, through the Housing Navigation Services will help them find places that will accept them.
I want to applaud you for having such a successful program. When you say you've housed, found housing for fifty...
Yes.
Homeless people, that, that's a total number, or would that include some families?
It's the total number of units that we have provided, fifty.
It could be more than one person.
Yes, it could be more than one person.
Yes, because some people do have a child, or a spouse, or somebody.
Yes.
So that could get us to that, we've heard a number in the past, I think, of around eighty-eight.
Yeah, it could get us pretty close, and if we're not there, we're going to be there really soon.
It's just amazing, it is just amazing, I just, I can't thank you enough, either, I think it's just wonderful.
Thank you, we're excited about it, it's going to be a good program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy, thanks, Mayor. Actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract with USP Technologies Supply Collection System Auto Control Services, I'd like to vote on this, please. Yes.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
The reason I voted no is there's, there was a supplier that was three hundred thousand dollars lower than this group, and, and I don't know why we ask people to give us bids, if we're not going to be willing to at least give them a try, and I asked for information of what was so much different, and I, quite frankly, I didn't get a very good response, so the staff can just accept my no vote today, for lack of doing a better job. B is a resolution approving amendment...
I thought there was a memo.
Number four to the Collection System Auto Controls Services.
I read the memo.
Contract with USP Technologies, I'd like to vote on that, as well.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
C is a resolution approving an agreement for maintenance and repair of primary roads with the IDOT. D is a resolution approving a global settlement agreement and release with K&amp;L Construction and RSNH for the rehabilitation of taxiway F and the removal of the abandoned taxiway project, I'd like to vote on that, as well.
Scott?
No.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Have a conflict of interest, abstain.
Janer?
Aye.
E is a resolution approving the contract with Vanderpool Escavating for the South Fairmont Street Reconstruction Project. F is a resolution approving a contract for Barclay Asphal for the resurfacing project, I'd like, Dave never really said, Dave, you never really did say, does the resolution now match the staff recommendation, because it didn't?
Well, I, I was, I mistakenly read the, the RCA wrong when I, I was trying to get you an answer, but it does match, the contractor will get to keep all the millings on this project.
Okay, so that's why it's a million one eighty-six, or what?
Correct.
Okay. G is a resol, well, no, then let me go back, because when you sent me the, when you sent me your response, you said you should keep them, because they were worth more than that, or they...
I, I misread it, I thought they took the option that, of the, because it said without millings, well, the without millings meant that they were keeping the millings, we were going without the millings, I just misread what they...
So are we keeping the millings?
No, not on this one, we're keeping on the other project, we're not keeping on this one.
And that's my question, why aren't we, because you said they were so valuable, that they were worth more than what they were giving you, are they not?
It's, it's probably right around the break, but we felt we got enough millings off the other one.
All right. G is a resolution granting a permit to Midwest Fiber Networks to maintain underground cable in the intersection of Nineteenth Street and Ingleside Avenue. I should have asked this. We're repaving that, didn't, did we repave that last year? Nineteenth and Ingleside, did we repave that, or were we paving it this year?
This year.
I mean, I want to make sure they get it in before we get a street in, so we don't tear a street up to put fiber in.
Gordon Ferris, C Engineer, this is actually a part of, they're doing this ahead of time for our paving.
All right, that's what I want to make sure. H is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the city, the Art Center Association, and the Board of Trustees of the Art Center to maintain the accreditation through the American Alliance of Museums. Purchasing, A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to VISCO for the purchase of five Rotork MK3 valves. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Grove's Emergency Lighting for insulation for part, part, partitions, push bumpers and bumper wraps, light kits and inner edge rear lights. C is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Kel-Tec for hint mount, center console units, Eltron scanner, dual radar unit, and ProGuard long gun racks. D is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Electronic Engineering for Brother's Pocket printer.
Mayor, could I, could I please go back to eight H and ask the director on the Art Center, this is something you apply for every five years, isn't it?
The reaccreditation?
On the, yes.
Every ten years.
Oh, it's every ten years, so that ten years is up, is coming up, is that why we're...
Correct, and, and this was something a little different, we have to go through that application process every ten years, for some, and we've been, we've been accredited now for, goodness, I should know, but probably thirty years. For some reason, this topic came up the, for the first time, just wanting a single statement, an MOU, to chart the relationship between the city, the trustees, and the Association Board, just a, they wanted a clear statement, so that anybody could understand whose responsibilities are what.
I certainly appreciate that you're, you're doing that, because I, I don't know what the Art Center would be today without the Board of Trustees and the Art Center Association, I mean, the, the members of those two boards are just doing an outstanding work, and outstanding projects for the Art Center.
Indeed.
So I'm glad to see that this is being formalized. Thank you.
Lots of, lots of Art Centers don't necessarily rely upon city funding, so don't forget that the city taxpayers have done a great job, too.
Absolutely.
Well, that's right.
Absolutely, and I forgot to state Todd Behrens.
Your former director didn't always believe that, so. Ten are applications for cigarettes, tobacco, nicotine, vapor minutes, see the list come forth if you have questions. Eleven are applications for beer and liquor license, see the list come forth if you have questions. Twelve are receipt amendments, see the list come forth if you have questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those?
Please, I'm going to abstain on item eleven. Conflict of interest.
Yes, you may use your voting panels.
Passes five zero thirteen is an ordinance dedicating and naming an unnamed right-of-way between Seaborne Triumph Parkway and Aviation Boulevard, as Al Haynes, Drive, petitioner. City of Sioux City, P&amp;Z recommends approval of this item, I'll move it. Second. This is not a hearing, so we have a motion, second, yes, sir?
Good afternoon, Ryan Ross, Chairman of Planning of Zoning. There was a seven-zero vote on this item, and there was no one from the public making comment.
Thank you. Compliment of P&amp;Z.
Correct.
Excellent.
Per con our attendance.
Thank you. Passes five zero, anybody opposed with statutory rule? Move that. Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. I'll move second and third. Second. Passes five zero fifteen is a hearing and resolution approving a dark fiber master lease agreement with FiberCom for the use of fiber optic cables in various locations, I'll move that.
I saw it, I'll correct it, the second, third wasn't in there.
Oh, I skipped fourteen, let's go back, I did second and third.
I know, it wasn't on, in the voting.
Oh, so what do you want me to do?
Nothing, I'll record the vote as it was.
Okay.
It's all...
I'll go back to fourteen, the resolution approving the final plot of Expedition Business Park, petitioner of the City of Sioux City, P&amp;Z recommends approval, I'll move it. Second.
That is also a seven-zero vote, there was no public comment on the item.
Mr. Mayor, I need to clarify one point on the second paragraph down, was noted that the spec bill, the reasons for this plot are to allow for two spec buildings to be built on Lot Four, the minutes indicated Lot Five, so I just need to clarify that.
Okay.
Welcome to stay for the remaining part of the meeting.
Or you can go back and bill a lot of money.
Thanks, Ryan.
Hearing, hearing and resolution approving a dark fiber master lease agreement with FiberCom for the use of fiber optic cables in various locations, now...
Wait, just a moment, Mayor, Councilman Greckin, you had not voted on item fourteen, there we go.
Passes five zero, now I'll move at fifteen. Second. Public hearing is now open, is there anyone that would like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero fifteen is a hearing and resolution approving a conduit space master lease agreement with FiberCom for use of conduit in, inter, interduct manholes and handholds in various locations, I'll move that. Second. Hearing's now open, if you'd like to be heard, I would like to ask a question, that, I want to make sure we're not giving any cable company permission to go through somebody else's private building. Because when you go through a skywalk, and you branch off that, you're going into somebody's building without permission.
Correct. Nicole DuBois, City Attorney, the understanding of these agreements is, this will be for conduit that's already placed under, in right-of-way, in street locations, so as far as skywalks, that's a, a separate situation, which is governed by easements.
Well, I think they're planning on being able to hang conduit on our skywalks, are they not?
No, it's stoplights.
That, that has not been discussed with me...
On the corners.
Regarding anything to do with the skywalks, my understanding is this is in the street locations, in the right-of-way specifically.
Okay, well somehow they got to get into buildings, and you have multiple tenant buildings, so do, who do they have to get permission from to do that?
They have to, if they want to enter any of the city's conduit, they have to fill out a form, which is attached to the agreement, requesting the specific location for where they're going to be going, then that will go to the Fiber Review Committee to make a determination as to whether or not it will be allowed.
Mayor, this is, these three agreements are to provide, to allow for the wireless Wi-Fi that they will hang off city streetlights and, and signals.
Okay. Anyone to be heard, hearing is closed. This thing mustn't be working, Alex.
No. Taking a little...
You broke it.
Did I?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Passes five zero.
You told me, I looked at her.
Seventeen is a hearing and resolution approving a pole attachment master lease agreement with FiberCom for the use of vertical municipal structures in various locations, I'll move that. Second. Hearing is now open, anyone want to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero eighteen is a hearing and resolution approving a proposal to sell property at twenty-two thirty-one Geneva Street, petitioner is Brian James Schumacher, I'll move that. Second. Hearing is now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero nineteen is a hearing and resolution approving a proposal to sell property at budding eighteen-hundred Sioux Trail, petitioner Morningside College, I'll move that. Second. Anyone to be heard, the hearing is now open. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes four zero to one, Mr. Waters abstains. Twenty is a hearing resolution instituting proceedings for the issuance of general obligation urban renewal bonds, I'll move that. Second. The hearing is now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero twenty-one is a resolution directing the advertisement for sale of general obligation bond, series twenty twenty-one A, I'll move that. Second. Passes five zero twenty-two is a resolution directing the advertisement for the sale of taxable general obligation bond, series twenty twenty-one B, I'll move that. Second. Passes five zero, citizen concerns, any citizen have a concern, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Dave Carney, Public Works, I just wanted to remind everyone, tomorrow, the Iowa DOT is holding their public meeting on the Viad, Gordon Drive, Viaduct, and Bacon Creek Project, it's a online public meeting, you can get the link on the DOT's website, I think it's also on our, we have a public notice out for it, so I just want to remind everybody, it'll be a little bit different format being online, so.
What time does it...
Yeah, what's the time?
Five to seven.
Five to seven?
Yep.
Anyone else? Mr. Greckin?
No, sir.
Here, Lee.
I would just like to bring up one more time for anyone who's watching online, I want to congratulate our Neighborhood Services Department, who worked very hard to try to assist and place our homeless population, they opened up, housed fifty-five areas, or homes, doors, apartments, in our community, and each one of those apartments or homes is housing at least one or more people who were formerly living on our street somewhere, who were without a home, and I just want to say how proud I am of that, and they're going to continue on, going to try to keep working on the homeless situation, and I, I think that they're definitely making a difference, and anything that we as a community can do to support them is wonderful, and it's not always handing money to the person that is on the corner, who may be homeless, that may be taking those funds, that you maybe were going to help that person with that day at that particular time, and donating it to one of our community services who are much in need, those dollars go to helping the homeless as well, and it's probably more efficient to do it that way as well, the money goes where it's really needed, for the housing, and for supplementing people in their needs, so, again, I just want to say thanks so much to our Neighborhood Services Department, they're doing a wonderful, wonderful job, it really kind of touched my heart today. Thank you.
Mr. Waters?
I thought you were going to point out, another thing that you always point out, which I really appreciated, something that I think we need to probably vocalize a lot more, was the infrastructure projects, you're usually great about being on top of that, and this council, I believe the numbers were right, is one point nine million in overlay projects, is that right, gentlemen? Is that, or what?
Yes.
Right, one point nine mil in overlay, and then I think it was...
One...
And then I think it was one point eight for Ruston, no, whatever, the reconstruction from Transit to Vine, so, I mean, that's a lot of infrastructure projects that are happening in our community, so, I thought you might bring that up, but that's something we need to...
I usually do, but this has just had me verklempt, and I just had to make sure that I got that out.
No worries, I just think, those are pretty exciting projects as well, so I'm looking forward to that, and continuing to, to fix the streets, which is something that we hear rather often. and continuing to, to fix the streets, which is something that we hear rather often. The only other things that I wanted to highlight, this past week, we, on Friday, we had litter dash. I was lucky to be able to be down there and welcome volunteers and thank them for serving. We had nearly 1,000 people sign up to help clean up our community. Yeah, it was a huge turnout. Lots of people. What was awesome was we saw a lot of corporate partners, which I greatly appreciate. You saw a lot of businesses coming together saying, we believe this is important for the future and for our community overall, so we want to make sure to invest in that as well. So a lot of employers brought their employees out. Some were even wearing matching shirts and they just rolled up their sleeves for an afternoon to help beautify our city, which is something that I greatly, greatly appreciate. If you are interested in continuing that endeavor, you can always reach out to Parks and Recreation. They have bags available. They have gloves available and any other resources that you would need.
Streets available to adopt?
Pick that up. Yeah, you can adopt streets and things like that to make sure to keep them clean and make sure we are welcoming people and putting our best foot forward. The other thing that I wanted to say that was actually happening that day at the same time, oddly enough, was Dallas Clark was in town. He was actually, he and the Lieutenant Governor were getting their vaccine at the Expo Center. I would just commend not only Chris McGowan, but also park staff, Matt Salvatore, John Burns. Those individuals ran a really great event, not only trying to handle litter dash, but also then that vaccine clinic. So thank you, Hy-Vee and all those individuals that were there for that. Part of that push was to make sure that, especially men, men, I believe they were saying from the age of, I forget if it was 20 to 65 or 35 to 65, somewhere in there, we need to do a better job. The statistics are not there that we are getting vaccinated. And it was emphasized at that, at that press conference and event that we need to do our part. I understand that there's some conflicting messages out there about vaccinations. I would just encourage you to reach out to your doctor or someone that you trust to really make that decision for yourself. But really take, keep in mind, you're not only protecting yourself, but you're protecting your community as well. So please look into that and get vaccinated if possible. I think Kevin has done a great job with the team at District Health, running a tight ship. So if you would like to get vaccinated, please, please do so and reach out. The last thing that I would bring up is it is NAIA volleyball week and I am pretty excited. The action starts tomorrow at 8:30 AM, I believe. So make sure that if you own a storefront and you would like to, especially downtown, if you'd like to welcome the teams. Downtown Partners has some paint that they would be maybe willing to be able to go out there and have you paint your windows welcoming the teams. If nothing else, please go down there, support those teams, cheer them on and, and thank them for coming to our community and make them feel welcome. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, Dan? Mayor, I am looking forward to our meeting tomorrow at 1 o'clock to discuss the COVID-19 relief funding. It'll be here in the council chambers and I, I'm just excited to see what staff is going to be presenting to us for projects and priorities and that kind of thing under the relief funding. So I'm looking forward to the meeting. I'm glad we're having it. I don't know if all of the regulations are out, Mr. Padmore. They're not out, but we're going to work with what we have and, and do the best we can. It'll be just an initial meeting to, to cover those items. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
I'd echo what Alex said about the cleanup. Unfortunately, as you drive some of those areas now, there's still garbage. People just need to stop littering.
Right.
It's disheartening when you see that many people out doing what they did to make the city look better and then to drive by like 19th Street from Grandview down to Hamilton. Has stuff in there already. It's just really discouraging.
And the bags are still sitting by the side of the road. Is that Gil Halling going to pick that up or?
Well, and city staff was. I know, like I texted John and let him know where some were. So we have, we have men and women that would do that if you let them know where they are.
I will.
Yeah, I think there's still one on the trail right above the, right below the Urb Jensen Bridge on that.
We may not be able to wait another year for a litter dash. Maybe we'll have to do.
But anyway, I appreciate all of that, those efforts.
Catch up on the cleanup is what I call it. Help us.
I move adjourned. Second.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye. And is that Haley back there? Haley, welcome.